And could we all rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance?
Let us pray. God, during this month of April, we thank you for the rebirth of fresh beauty in our mountains, and for our loved ones, and particularly our families. Grant us your grace, Lord God, as this council makes decisions that affect those who live, work, and visit in this town. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, item number four, the approval of the agenda, and I know there's at least one change recommended.
Yes, I'd like to make a, I'd like to recommend that we dispense with the liaison reports tonight because we have such a long agenda. And if anyone's interested in a particular liaison report, or, or more than one, could just let Andy know when she'll get a, get you a copy of the minutes from that particular board meeting.
I'm okay with that. Do we need a, okay? Okay, we're also, you don't have to make a motion.
Yeah, not yet.
But just, let's do it out. Let's do with that, okay. Mary Ann?
The one thing I would like to ask is that fifteen B be moved down with seventeen A, and be A one and A two, because they both deal with fee waivers.
Okay, so we're moving out of the consent agenda.
Same person, too. You're same person, same people.
Yeah, okay, so we'll move it down to seventeen A and A and one A two. Okay, we'll do that. John, one other question. Were you, there was a manager's report, too. You want to move that out of the?
I, I think that Sam can do kind of an abbreviated report.
Yeah, I promised you, what, two minutes? One minute?
All right, very good. We'll watch it.
Well.
Highest bidder.
We haven't done, finished the agenda yet, have we?
No.
Uh, I, I kinda thought that, let's see, where's that? It's, I don't even see it on the agenda now. It, it was the reaffirming the town center small area master plan, oh, seventeen D?
Right.
I don't know that we need to spend time with a discussion on that. That's something that could be moved to the consent agenda. I felt like.
I'm fine with that.
I am, too.
I am, too.
Yep.
Okay, so that's D is be part of the consent agenda. Okay, any, any others hearing none, all in favor of, may have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Moved by Steve. We'll hear a second. Second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. This is the staff report, you, okay. Okay, item number six, then. Public hearing. Proposed ordinance number sixteen dash four dash twelve, amending the lake structures regulations of the town of Lake Lure, concerning intent and application, design and construction standards, alteration and reconstructions of structures, lake shoreline stabilization, lake structure certi- certificates and tags, maintenance of structures, markers, commercial and multi-dwelling use, lake structures, cluster mooring facilities, marinas, and prohibited uses. Sounds like a whole entire zoning codes. Okay, public hearing, there was nobody signed up. Would anybody like to speak on that?
Well, I, I can, I can open that up, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. That was an initiative of mine back in September of two thousand and fifteen, a recommended changes. The town council referred it to the LAB, and, and the discussions got put off due to other activities. So, January, February timeframe, Mr. Calhoun, Gary Johnson, the lake structure representative for the LAB, and I had several conversations and meetings. February the first, we presented hard copy changes to the lake advisory board. And then on March the seventh, their meeting, they discussed it, and, and these changes that we're providing tonight were unanimously approved by the lake advisory board. Our intent was to simplify and eliminate confusion throughout, and apply common sense, and encourage repairs to existing structures. We added some, some definitions and modified others that support our text amendments. We modified the section that deals with shoreline links, moorings, slips, piers, completely eliminating the very confusing ninety-four oh five D, which had been amended four times the first year it was put in place. And, and we brought that whole section into parity with the concept. If it can legally be built into setbacks, it should be allowed. We also modified the section regarding repairs, eliminating that arbitrary fifty percent of the appraised value of the structure. And, and we redefined what can, what is considered repairs and what's considered reconstruction, and it now allows property owners to effect common sense repairs with a minimum degree of bureaucracy, and, and without regard to the structure's value. We also made some minor changes because of the Gergen case back in January, where now if, if a, if a lake structure has grandfathered living quarters, and they do want to change that to a rental, that application has to go to the lake structure appeals board for a decision. And then it would go to the town council for appeal if necessary. And that, that's a summary of the changes being presented, so.
Okay, would anybody like to speak on any of that? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to item number seven. And without going through all of the words again, because I got tongue tied the first time, consider adoption of ordinance number sixteen oh four dash twelve. Any further discussion?
No, I think it's, like Steve said, common sense, and get government the least amount of control, so I'll make that motion for that we accept this.
It's a great improvement on what we had in place before, and I'll second it.
Motion made by Bob, second by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's done deal.
I'd like to thank, thank everyone involved in making this happen. This was a long process, and I think it was something that was long overdue, so.
Okay, moving on. Very good, Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, public hearing, the resolution number sixteen oh four dash twelve concerning sewer rates. No one had signed up, but would anybody like to speak in that? I see no hands. So, what I'd like to do on, on that one is that Bob and Valerie will sort of kick it off with an introduction, and then Harlow, you'll be up with them, or after them. So go ahead, Bob.
As you know, we've got a situation with our sewer plant. It's been ongoing for many, many years, ten to twenty years, that we've been unable to meet the standards for water discharge. Our plant was originally built back in the twenties. We've done two patch jobs in the last ten years through engineering of trying to meet the standards of quality water discharge. We've been unable to do so. We've had professional consultants in for the last several years, helping us and then giving us the guidance on the future of what we need to do. Through this process, we looked at either building a new sewer plant, which was around twelve million dollars, or pipe it to either Spindale or Rutherfordton, which would be also twelve to fourteen million dollars. After all this, we're, utility advisory board was formed, and helping us with professional people on their board to give us the best route, best way of correcting this sewer problem long term. Unfortunately, with this, we have to go out and get a loan, of course, through different areas or different grants. We have two options. One is, we can go straight out and get a, get a loan and pay two to three percent interest or higher, which means two and a half million dollars worth of interest payments. Or we can also try to go out and qualify for the zero percent loans, which means that we have to go up on our average sewer rates. Now, the reason for this is, the Lake Lure, the average income, we all qualify and make too much money. So what they do is they look at strictly the residential customers, and that goes into a formula, and if you're in a certain window, then any, any group above that window does not meet that criteria if their rate is below another criteria. So we'll ask our engineers to explain that to you tonight. We were gonna send out some information, but until we settled on the rates and settled on a vote at council on which direction we are going as far as loans, and, and the process, we felt it'd be premature to send out any information too early. We're gonna ask Valerie to come up and speak, and she'll address the means that we plan on informing our town and community to let you know what we're doing and where and why. It's not something that we take lightly. This has been a long-term problem and discussion. The sewer plant's been an issue. The engineers can tell you forever. I don't remember what the contracts were, but we did an upgrade, how many years ago, Sam?
Nineteen ninety-one.
Nineteen ninety-one, and that one failed. And we've been spending money just patching it and trying to keep us from exceeding the state standards, and we've actually been fined by the state several times. And then we have to go into state agreements to even keep it operational. So this is a critical decision that we have to make. It's not one we love to do, but unfortunately, the bug stops with us having to make the decision here. So Valerie, if you would please, let, let everyone know how we're gonna give them the information and what information we'll be providing. I appreciate it.
I'm Valerie Hoffman. I support the town with communication efforts, the website, the newsletter, our social media pages. And I think, as you can pick up from what Bob said, this is a complex issue that's been going on for a long time. It's a lot of information to digest and share with our customers. And as he said, we didn't want to send the information out prematurely because had they made it, it was just a decision to do something different, it would have been premature. So because this is a lot of information, I think what we're going to do is send out an information sheet, and some FAQs, along with a presentation by our engineers. And that will go out to all sewer customers. It'll be put on the website. And anything that is discussed and decided here tonight will be made available through all of our communication portals. So I just wanted to reassure everyone that we will keep you all informed of this expensive and complex issue. Any questions for me?
Okay, Harlow, I know most of the information you are going to convey has already been said, so allow you the option or the flexibility of maybe just answering questions or covering the loan situation, or answering questions for council.
I am Harlow Brown, of Brown Consultants. Our firm has been working down at the sewer plant for the last ten years, trying to keep it operational. It's old, it's obsolete. The state probably would not allow us to rebuild it, because it is in the floodline. And, and I want to thank Councilman Cameron for giving my presentation. He did a much better job than I could. It's only to watch. We build a new plant further down the road, that's a site a few miles down the road. We could build a new plant, or we could build a pipeline. We've discussed this with the towns involved, and we have, we have a tentative agreement with the towns of Spindale except for our sewerage. They lost a lot of, a lot of their textile mills, as we all know, and which freed up space. They have a twelve million gallon plant. They're only using about a quarter of it. We'd have a long-term agreement and we'd pipe the sewers down there. The state is very happy about this proposed solution for a number of reasons. The biggest one is, we would eliminate a discharge permit into a highly classified river. Broad River's highly classified. It's also the source of the drinking water for the Broad River Water Project, which has an intake that's further down the river. And they, they would like to get the, to get the discharge permit eliminated. The project would affect sewer rates, obviously. The, the state has, has a loan program, and the interest on the loan is dependent upon the ability of the residents to pay. Now, Rutherford, the town of Lake Lure has a high beginning income compared to other towns and residents in the state. So we would, we could qualify, Mayor and Council, we would qualify for the zero percent interest, which on a twelve million dollar project would save over two million dollars just in finances. A lot of money. If we could raise the rates today to sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents per month per resident. The current rate is thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents per month. Now, I know Lake Lure bills bi-monthly, but the state talks, and everything they do is on a monthly basis. And we, we've looked at a lot of other alternatives. Most grant programs are, are gone. And, but we are, we are working with the utility committee that the council appointed, and, and we're gonna continue that to see if we can find some other funds. We know that this is gonna be a hardship on many of, of your customers, but we've exhausted a lot of alternatives on this. We've had hours and hours of meetings to look at alternatives. In fact, if, if you recall, the town received a sixty thousand dollar, the town and the other towns in the county received a sixty thousand dollar grant three years ago to hire a firm, which they hired Deputy Kate Dixon out of Charlotte, a very reputable firm, to look at many alternatives in Rutherford County, and, and the recommended one was to build this pipeline and connect to Spindale. So that's basically my presentation. If you have some questions?
Could you also discuss our utility board discussions? And Wayne, Wayne Hyatt, for those that don't know you, is chairman of your utilities board. He's an engineer, as well as a couple others on the board. They've all been involved in this conversation as well, and support the decision and what Harlow's recommending.
Yes, they do support it. Your utilities board have, have some folks on there that have very healthy resumes, especially in, in engineering and finance. And they, they've struggled with studying this and looking at alternatives. Right in this room, we've had about three meetings that have lasted many hours. And representatives of the council there, and this was the conclusion, to have a long-term solution to the issue of the sewer plant in the town of Lake Lure. The days of small towns operating inefficient small plans is basically over. The state is really pushing for regionalization.
Harlow, could you speak for just a moment to the alternatives, what we might be facing if we did nothing? I understand that could be not very pleasant.
If you did nothing, the state would probably issue a J O C, a judgment of consent. And they would write down the list of what you're gonna do. And then they would go to the Department of Treasury, to the local government commission, and they would send you a letter and say, "Do it." And it basically would take any option, local option, off the paper. And I don't think that really is something that should be considered or even thought about. We're at a point where something needs to be done. We have been under a, a S O C, which is a consent of all order, which is like a settlement agreement between the town and the state, now for four years. And they want to get it discharged. And in order, I, I, I may be speaking too technically here, but it's, it's, it's a complicated situation between a local government and the state government when it comes to environmental matters. The EPA sets the standards. North Carolina is one of several states that are allowed to enforce those standards, so they have to work with the local authorities. And so I think, Mr. Moore, doing nothing is certainly not an option.
Yeah, that, that's what I understood, that that, of all, of all the options we have, that is the least appealing.
Yes, sir.
Harlow, they can come in and set your rates also, can't they?
Yes, they can. That actually happened about a week ago in the town of Tryon. They came in and they set the rates because the town refused to do what was necessary to, to take care of their, their situation down there. Are there some questions left?
Sure.
It's offering to connect to, to a creek and plant of the city. Is it a gravity flow line or would it be?
No, sir, it's a pump line. It'll be a, it'll be a twelve inch pipe. It'll require two pumping stations, which we're gonna strategically locate at Cove Creek and the next creek down, so that the system could be expanded up into those water sheds. And there is a, there's a high point. The route is basically US sixty-four right down into Spindale. And so you can't, you can't get there by gravity because there's too many pumps in that road if you've driven it before.
If we have a total gravity flow line, a pump line, rather than gravity flow into a, to a pump station, pumps are buried. And that could be a lot of trouble. You gotta do it, you gotta do it.
By the way, that, it was Dick Lothringer. I, I'll let you speak from where you are, rather than shuffle people up and back. Speak a little louder, raise your hand, and I'll allow you to speak, okay? Go ahead, Wally.
Wally, your? Sir, is the increase in the sewage rate to offset the cost of the green line? Or is it part of the requirement to get a zero interest loan? It's both. The rates will have to go, go up to offset the cost of the line, obviously twelve million dollars. But if we send rate at a certain percentage that the state sets, then we will get the zero percent loan.
Okay, John?
John, what's the current number of users on the sewer system?
There are almost a thousand users.
And does this, does this proposal allow for an increase in that, for more, for more users to be added?
Yes, sir. The waste, the plant, the Lake Lure Sewer Plant, I'm getting, also my memory is getting weak, but the Lake Lure Sewer Plant is permitted at one million gallons per day. Currently, in the winter, there's about two hundred thousand gallons a day, and in the summer, it can get as high as three hundred and fifty thousand. So you can see there's a good margin. And the pump stations will be sized to match the plant. So, so the capacity of the system will remain at one million gallons a day. And with just using a third of that, there's plenty of capacity for expansion within the town and within the surrounding area.
Would there be a chance that could offset the, some of the increase down the, down the road?
Oh, absolutely. The more, the, the more customers you get to tie on, the more you, folks you have sharing in the cost of operating the system.
Is there a way in the process to mandate connections?
Not even. Possibly in the town, but I don't think you could once you get out of the county. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm seeing none.
Diane.
Diane.
Oh, I'm sorry, Diane, I didn't see.
Diane Barrett. I just wanted to ask, because when I was on council, we had discussed an issue in regard to water, pumping water to the Broad River water line, along with the green line. Is that still in the works? Is that still being considered? Because that also was gonna produce money to the town, as I recall, that would help kind of offset things. So I've been helping.
That's not being considered in this.
It is not being considered.
What, one misconception a lot of folks have is if you can put a water pipe next to a sewer pipe, and the state has separation requirements, and in this case, it's, it's laterally, it's ten feet, so you wouldn't want to dig a ten-foot trench.
Well, I could clarify my question a minute ago, the reason I asked that about mandating connections. I know when the town extended the water system, that people were required to participate. Is that, is that correct?
But correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't the state just this year say that you can no longer do that?
Well, laws are certainly changing.
Oh, yes.
I believe that's.
They eliminated that about six months ago, eight months ago.
If I could, could comment on that, some of you, if you've been traveling Highway Nine, have seen water lines coming up to the state line. And people along that route had not been contacted. I was aware that the state laws had said you can no longer mandate that people hook onto the line, but they've done an interesting thing. They have sent out letters, and they have said, this water line is being put in. If you would like to tap on, there is a tap fee of something between four hundred and fifty and five hundred dollars if you do it during the next couple of months while we're working on the line. And you can leave it inactive and activate it at a later time. But if you wait until we complete the line, there will be a tap fee of something like twenty-five hundred dollars. And that was a real incentive for people to stop and think. Do I want to get the advantage of this rate? And something like that might increase the number of customers in the future.
And I say that, if people have their own septic system and stuff, they have to have septic tanks pumped and stuff like that periodically. I mean, they're spending money anyways. And what that would do for the environment around the lake and everywhere to, to have those, those systems run, that would be quite, quite a value to, to our town.
It would be a very good thing.
Yep. Thank you, Harlow. Wayne, did you have your hand up? Did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
I was gonna, I was gonna address one of the questions John had about adding people on. This is probably a hundred square miles we'll be looking at if it develops. And as, as a part of this, and it's spread down, and it's spread down. And we can't tell if some of the town lines are found and possibly used to offset.
Any other questions for either Harlow or among yourselves? Okay, they'll take it, move on out of the public hearing. Item number nine, consider adoption of resolution number sixteen dash four dash twelve concerning sewer rates.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed on the, on the, on the resolution we were handed, not the one in our packet, the corrected copy, and need to ask our town clerk for verification. On the agenda, it's got resolution sixteen oh four twelve, but on the sheet, it's got sixteen oh four twelve A. And we have twelve A later on in the agenda where we talk about the loan and grant application. So is this twelve? Okay, this is twelve, not twelve A. Okay, thank you. I wanted to verify that before. With that, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number sixteen dash oh four dash twelve, a resolution of the town of Lake Lure, North Carolina, amending the utility rates.
Motion made by Steve. Second by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. Moving on to item number ten. Presentation, Town of Lake Lure Weed Patch Mountain Recreational Park, Part F, the grant application. We need to get set up. And we have it here, but they don't have the benefit of it out there.
I can pull down.
Okay, it's gonna be tough for the people in the front row. I don't know if it, unless you wanna come up here and sit with us.
Everybody gather around at the base of the, sing songs. Oh, yeah. That's good.
We're high tech.
It's right here.
Yep, yeah, well, the only one that'll hit is Wayne, so it's alright.
Yeah, no problem. No problem.
Are you getting insured or what?
If the front row wants to see it, you'll have to move back a few seats. Bottomless.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I think so.
Okay, if you wanna, is, is it on yet?
Curry.
Yes.
Okay. You wanna introduce yourself and we'll go from there.
Uh, my name is Debbie Shutterly. I'm a contractor with Carolina Mountain Land Conservancy, who is, um, on.
Ooh, come around, yeah.
And can you turn that microphone up a little?
She's just getting closer, yeah.
Yeah.
Nah.
Can you hear?
Uh, this one. She's gonna get you set up with a separate microphone, I think.
That's better.
Is this better?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Debbie Shutterly. I'm a contractor with the Carolina Mountain Land Conservancy, who is, uh, co-authoring this proposal with the Town of Lake Lure for the Weed Patch Mountain Recreational Park. I thank you for the opportunity to present this proposal tonight, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, uh, I'm happy to have a little bit more pleasant subject than the last one. Um, the property location is the remainder of the fifteen hundred twenty-five acres that included Buffalo Creek Park. Um, the history of the land use is timber and recreation. The acreage is thirteen hundred twenty-four point five acres. Uh, currently it's a natural resource and it has pristine streams and waterfalls, um, high biological diversity, and it pretty much takes up the Weed Patch, uh, Natural Heritage Area. Scenic value is Gray Rock Vista, and the proposed usage is the mountain biking and hiking mecca plus primitive backcountry camping area. So on this, uh, map, you can tell that the, um, the green is the proposed purchase. The striped area is the existing Chimney Rock State Park. The X is where the Eagle Rock Vista is, that is, uh, one of the prominent locations in Chimney Rock State Park. The blue color is the current Buffalo Creek Park. So you can tell that this proposed park acquisition is just an extension of Buffalo Creek Park, and it's, um, one of the, um, greatest advantages is that it does link Buffalo Creek Park with Chimney Rock State Park. This is a, um, vista, uh, from the actual Gray Rock, so the town would be, um, acquiring this park, and this would be part of its, uh, scenic appeal now of the, uh, view from Gray Rock. And this is another view from Gray Rock. So the history of this whole acquisition, uh, CMLC acquired the whole Weed Patch tract in two thousand nine, and then in two thousand ten sold two hundred acres to the Town of Lake Lure. And this was done in the same type of structure that we're pro- proposing today, a part of grant, um, in which, um, in case the town did not actually pay, have any outgoing funds at all, um, the proposal aims to use the same strategy, um, to acquire the remainder of the track. And in parallel, the town is currently utilizing recreational trails program funds to, um, extend the mountain biking trail out of Buffalo Creek Park and onto this, this, this track. The tract in question is already conserved land. It has a conservation easement on it. The, this easement does allow recreational, uh, mountain biking, hiking and camping. So the proposal itself, uh, the town would purchase the proposed thirteen hundred twenty-four point five acres through the grant funding. Um, the application is for three hundred fifty thousand dollars. This program requires a fifty percent local match, which will be satisfied by CMLC's discounted price of the entire tract below market value. So what this boils down to is that the thirteen hundred twenty-four point five acres, they're approximately six hundred dollars per acre, is eight hundred thousand in market value. CMLC would donate four hundred fifty thousand, and the part of grant would take care of three hundred twenty thousand. Remaining, remaining thirty thousand would be used in the, uh, grant preparation administration and then additional trail work. And again, just to emphasize, the funds would be provided by the part of grant, so there would be no cost to the town. As correlated to this proposal, CMLC would utilize that remaining, uh, funding to help complete the mountain biking trail, the Eagle Rock. And of course, as you are aware, this section is also part of the proposed Summit Trail, a key component in the, in the northern section. Uh, CMLC, by virtue of its conservation easement on the property, agrees to monitor the said property in perpetuity, and in fact, they're legally obligated to do so. And in this proposal, the town would agree to steward the property. And this stewardship would have input from CMLC during the course of its monitoring, um, but it will primarily consist of, uh, invasives control, um, and then trail maintenance. Uh, the town would agree to maintain the trail system. Uh, the current plans are to utilize volunteers similarly to what is being, uh, done on the Buffalo Creek Park. Uh, CMLC is also open to entering into a long-term agreement for trail maintenance and management and details to determine. Uh, Toll agrees to assume fire and rescue responsibilities similar to its responsibilities at Buffalo Creek Park. So the advantages to this, uh, the town gains a major tourist draw, including mountain bikers, hikers, birders and campers. I've talked to numerous, uh, mountain bikers and friends of Chimney Rock, and, um, they say that this destination will rival any of the state for mountain biking. Uh, this park would also provide an impetus for multi-gay stays in the area, so the town would, um, benefit economically from this park as well. And as I mentioned a minute ago, ensures that a major section of the Summit Trail is completed, which not only draws additional hikers and campers, but provides the vision of the Summit Trail. Importantly, the town will fulfill a long-time, time desire of survey participants for adequate biking facilities in the area and biking opportunities in the region. And it's key to note that even though the master plan for Chimney Rock Park has identified this as a major area of, uh, emphasis for mountain biking and hiking, at the current time, the park is not even in, not into the foreseeable future, the park is not able to, um, purchase this particular tract. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the town would also have backcountry camping opportunities, uh, an opportunity that has been lacking up till now. Further advantages with the annexation of the park into the town limits, the town would gain additional territory, but not increase any infrastructure costs just due to the, um, the composition of land and the use of the land. And because of the conservation easement, the property is already off the tax rolls, so there isn't any loss of tax revenue that the town would incur. And then the town would also gain jurisdictional control over the site. And due to the structure of this proposal, the grant funding, the town would expend no capital, um, in the expansion of the park. Um, a further advantage is that Carolina Mountain Land Conservancy would get additional funding to continue its work in the gorge, uh, stewarding the land, providing more recreational trail opportunities, all of which, um, bring more tourism and, um, multi-state states to the town. And then the town could also possibly gain residual funding to complete trails to the various waterfalls that are on the park, property. So are there any additional costs? The, uh, trail maintenance, the Carolina Mountain Land Conservancy and town would enter into a long-term maintenance agreement. Um, primarily, this would focus on volunteers providing the maintenance, so that that would limit the cost. Uh, invasives control would probably be the major cost, but CMLC has agreed to set aside eighteen thousand dollars to eradicate the invasives, um, to the point at which volunteers can maintain the property. And that, um, it's anticipated that would be about three years from now that volunteers will be able to maintain. Uh, fire and rescue, I talked to Ron Morgan, he did not anticipate any additional costs in that realm. Other questions? Any downsides to applying for receiving the grant? Staff cannot be turned off where there would be. The Parks and Re- uh, Recreation Board has already approved this proposal. And what if we don't get the grant? Then Carolina Mountain Land Conservancy will continue to own the, own the property and partner with the town, um, but just to the extent that, um, current funding will allow as far as the further construction of the trail. So it, it leaves the, um, completion of the Summit Trail in, in pretty serious doubt. So next steps would be for the town council to vote on the approval tonight. Um, if it is approved, then the grant application would be submitted on May second, and then no notification of any grant funding would be given when the call of issue. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Pretty thorough.
Just, just comment, Debbie, this is the same presentation I heard last month at the Parks and Recreation Board.
Yes.
No changes?
No changes, other than, uh, at your suggestion, we looked into the exact cost that would, uh, might be incurred, and, and so I'd have to go soon.
Thank you.
No questions. Very good, Debbie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number eleven, the, uh, the public hearing, uh, is there anybody who would, nobody signed up, but is there anybody who would like to speak on this subject? Seeing none? Move on to item number twelve.
Yeah, there's not a, there's not a prepared motion in our packet, but, uh, I, I make the motion that, uh, we approve the, uh, Town of Lake Lure Weed Patch Mountain Recreational Park, P A R T F grant application, so they can proceed with that.
Okay, motion made by Steve Dohair, second.
I'm second.
Second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous? Okay, Debbie, approve. Pretty good. We're having, having trouble here.
Killing screens.
Sheila did it. Same person probably installed both of them.
Okay. Item number thirteen, I put that in there as being the town manager's, uh, uh, report. Sam?
Okay, I'll, two minutes, one minute?
Okay.
Uh, it's budget time, so we've completed about ninety-nine percent of the operation budget. We have met with department heads, um, just waiting on some insurance quotes and should, um, be good to go. Um, we are expecting a, the Rutherford County's real property value estimates by the end of this month, and as soon as we get that, we can plug in and start working on the revenues. Uh, we need to schedule a budget worksheet, uh, workshop in, uh, May with the council, so keep your, your, um, schedule open. Radar, radar signs for Boys Camp Road have been ordered. We expect delivery by the end of the month. Let's see, we've, we've published, we talked about, we, we published the ad for the property on, uh, for sale on Buffalo Shoals Road. This is the lakefront lot with boathouse, and this is the, uh, because it's sale of real property, it's the upset bid process, the first round of bids we will accept through May thirty-first. And then, as always, the council will have, um, uh, prerogative to either accept or reject the bids. If the bids come in low, lower than we expect, uh, we can reject those. Lake debris cleanup is underway, uh, servicing, uh, mowers and equipment for the upcoming season, ongoing mulch, uh, mulching for public areas and parks. Um, I'm gonna skip that one. Um, we're finishing up our boat database. Uh, we're gonna go through a, a demo sometime next week. Uh, in dredging, we removed over sixty-two hundred cubic yards. Uh, we started construction on the trail from Buffalo Creek Park to Eagle Rock. Met with Charlie Ellis for, on the strip store mall, uh, discussed marketing and repairs. Uh, Chief Ron Morgan is working on finalizing the new fire department contracts with the town. In hydro, we collected over eighty-four thousand dollars last month. We are a hundred and three thousand dollars short of our record of seven hundred thousand with three months to go. That would be an average of thirty-five thousand dollars a month, and the way Donnie is running that plant, that's very, um, approachable. Uh, and then, I had a, a, uh, email from Dale at the golf course, the, uh, month of March was fantastic. He, he has, um, has a hundred more rounds of golf this year over last year at this time, or actually for the month of March. And, um, they're excited about, uh, they're receiving a new fleet of Easy Go, Easy Go golf carts by the middle of the month, and the turf and the greens look good.
Thank you. Pretty good. Any questions for Sam? Okay. Very good, Sam. Thank you.
Thanks. I didn't beat my one minute, though.
No, you didn't.
I'll come in late tomorrow.
Didn't you see it? Yeah, you gotta work harder than that to get fired right now.
Okay, item number fourteen is the public forum, and we had one person, Lori Barnwell. Uh, Lori, would you come forward and please?
I just had one, I hope, will be a simple request, which is to request that the town consider revising the zoning regulation ordinance nine two point one one six, specifically section D. There are several of us, at least in the, in Lake Lure Village, that have, or would desire to put up a wooden fence, but rather than having the tickets to back it with a metal type material, so that it's not quite as intrusive. And as the code is written right now, we cannot do so. So I'm requesting that you reconsider that.
Did, did you say B or D?
D.
D, okay.
We can, uh, ask the zoning and planning board to review that, and, uh, um, I guess we probably made a motion for that. I'll make a motion that we ask the zoning and planning board to review that at their next meeting.
I'll second.
Give us a recommendation.
Motion made by John, second by Bob. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, see, you might, you might wanna come to that meeting. It'll be, uh, Tuesday at nine thirty. We from the day.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, um, number fifteen, the consent agenda. We moved, uh, item B out to seventeen A two, I guess.
Right.
And we moved in, uh, seventeen D into the consent agenda.
Right.
So I do hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Stephen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mary Ann. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? Okay, I don't believe there's any unfinished business. Okay, moving on to new business, and this would be a couple topics, um, and we'll make the first one. Consider approval of a request from Laura Deaton on behalf of the Chamber of Hickory Nut Gorge to host a weekly farmer's market every Friday in the meadows and waive the rental fee for the events. Do you wanna talk about the other one first? Okay. All right, let's just, let's just go with that, okay? Laura, do you wanna come up and, uh, speak to the issue of what your thoughts are and what your plans are? What'd you like to see happen?
My name is Laura Deaton, and, uh, I'm new to the community. I've been here, lived in Charleston about a year and a half ago. I love this area, but I think that our area would really benefit our community a little bit of the farmer's market. I guess that other areas have farmer's markets, see the crowds, if they draw on the, you know, just the sense of community it creates. And I was thinking, we could use the grassy area to the right of the welcome center.
Laura? Laura? Laura, would you face here?
Sure, sure. But the grassy area of the meadows is what I was thinking, where people just park, back in, have a table on the backside of their truck, and sell local produce, baked goods, food items, not crafts. But we've selected, we have a committee selected Fridays from 4 to 7, so it won't conflict with Saturday markets that are, you know, all in the other areas. But we've identified a list of prospective producers, and we've even got a winery who's interested in attending, so it's a great location.
Does this come as a recommendation from the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, it was my brain job. But the Chamber supports it, and they're willing to sponsor.
Okay.
Laura, I guess it was about six or seven years ago, they tried doing a market, this was on, I think, Tuesday mornings, and someone told me that they have asked the folks who were doing that to give us back some feedback on why that didn't take off. It just never drew a crowd, either of sellers or buyers. At that time, it was over in the parking lot at the ABC Store. Several other locations have been suggested since I've looked at this, such as, there's a parking area near the Flowering Bridge, down on the river, the ABC Store, the area that is going to be developed as a strip mall up above the ABC Store, even possibly the parking lot. I don't know if Ingalls would want a farmer's market, 'cause that would be competition, but the Mahack parking lot, several other locations have been suggested. I agree, a farmer's market would be great, if it gets the support it needs to survive. However, several years ago, because there's a great deal of maintenance that goes on in the meadows area and the park area, and we revised our fee schedule to reduce the use of the meadows dramatically from, I believe, $250 a day to $100 a day. And to no longer make fee waivers because of the need to maintain the area and because to reserve it and waive the fee means that somebody who wanted to use the meadows and pay $250 would not have access to it. So all of this in consideration, and the question that I have is, would these potential sellers be paying a fee to the Chamber?
Yes, they would.
Okay.
It's a nominal fee.
And the Chamber, being a nonprofit, would qualify for the reduced fee, not the $250. And I would suggest that because there are other places available that might not charge, that I personally feel we don't want to start that fee waiver scenario again, because it was like, if you come and tell us, you're good people, you're doing a good thing, we want a fee waiver, we wanted to do that. But when other people came in, we either had to say, well, you're not doing a good thing, and we don't like you. It got to be contentious, to say the least. So with that being said, do you feel the meadows is the best location? Do you feel that the Chamber will be able to collect enough fees to be able to pay that minimal charge of $100?
It'd be close, if, we're talking about $8 per week, based off of what other markets are charging. If we go anything higher than eight, we're not gonna get the vendors. We were choosing that because it's not just a market, but something for families to come and gather, hang out, have maybe somebody playing acoustic guitar, no P A system, and having family games. So a kind of a community and visitors visiting, and kind of a fun afternoon kickoff the weekend. My concern is, if we get 10 to 15 vendors parking at some of those locations, it's gonna be a problem. And I did speak with the gentleman who had the farmer's market before about the problems, and that really was not a farmer's market, that was a crafters' market.
Well, it was, it was both. It included...
It wasn't, we've got an application for vendors, it's a selection process, carefully selected. So we're not, we're not going for crafting, because that gets sticky.
Laura, how many weeks do you think you would need to do this to determine whether or not it would be successful?
I would think a month to six weeks. What we're hoping is to start it the Friday of Memorial Day weekend, there's a lot of people in town.
Okay.
And are you aware that Memorial Day weekend is when the Lakelore Arts and Crafts will be in town?
Yes. The only weekend, I've looked at schedules, and the only Friday that it looks that we would not be able to have one would be the Friday of the field showing of the Dirty Dancing movie. Other than that, the meadows looks like it's open every Friday, so that would be a total of 22 weeks, running it through the end of October.
So that would be, if the minimal fee were paid $2,200 for 22 weeks, if it's successful?
We barely have enough money with the fee to even cover advertising. That's what the fee charges for. It's not the profit, it's for covering advertising and expenses.
And other families and groups that want to pay $250 for the meadow, it would not be available?
Correct.
Sam, how many rentals are we getting on the meadows this week?
Not a lot. I can't remember what... Andy, you remember what we charged for the meadow? Is it $50 a day?
$250.
$250?
$250, yeah.
The chart is in here. The standard rate for the meadows, a full-day rental is $250. Qualifying charitable events was reduced to 100 when we stopped considering waivers. There is also a security deposit that is refunded if they leave everything in good shape.
All right, what does the council think about a, if someone's gonna come in and take several weeks, how many would you wanna commit to to start off with?
If you have four weeks?
Four weeks, a reduced rate for a kind of a volume discount, somebody coming in and doing four weeks at one time, give them, give some kind of reduction on that, maybe. $250 for the four weeks, rather than $100 for each week. See how, that gives an opportunity for you to have a plan that would let you see if it worked.
Okay.
And at that point, we could come back and revisit this thing, and you say, hey, this thing is really just taking off, we've got a lot of vendors, we can afford to pay the $100 per week. Or you may say that, you know, this just isn't catching on, and that way, we've given it an adequate chance to start, and we can revisit it at that point.
So the next step would be to...
Well, I think we could make a motion now for that, that I'll make a motion that we give you...
Before you do, I had some questions for you, too, before we got to a motion. We got two different letters, one that's in the packet with the application, and then one that was handed to us this evening. Now, the one in the packet mentions posting signs each week along the roadside and intersections in the area.
Right, which I understand now that that's not allowed.
Yeah, you would need to discuss that with our zoning administrator and make sure that those are acceptable. And there's no alcohol?
There'd be sale of wine, that had burnt shirt, meaning bottled wine.
Which is not allowed in the meadows, right?
They sell a bottle of wine?
From what I read on the agreement, is alcohol is not allowed in the meadows.
If it's not opened?
Right.
Is it consumption or the selling?
I don't know, on the back of it.
They just wanted vendors that had presented an interest, that vendors had said we would like to, but, you know, we can...
We've got some of our officers here, do y'all know off the top of your head if it...
I'd have to review the ordinance, my understanding is the consumption.
It's the consumption, that they can sell a bottle of wine.
Right.
Okay. With that, is that a deal, is that, if you couldn't do the wine at all, that's not a...
Okay.
Well, I just would comment that when that, what's the name of that distillery? When there was a big event out there, Defiance had, had distillery hard liquor tasting.
Beer garden, was it a beer garden, Blaine?
Pardon?
Was it a beer garden?
No, it was not beer, it was hard liquor. They distill that hard liquor over wherever they do it. They have a tasting area there, you have to...
But they get a special act of the General Assembly that's passed for distilleries?
You have to put it out on town property.
Oh, they, okay.
It was out there, in the meadows.
My recollection is that we approved that for the Dirty Dancing Festival, which I think that was part of, that's my recollection.
We were asked to suspend the ordinance or something, I'm not sure that that's the correct terminology. But some questions have come up about alcohol that we're gonna look into with the ABC Board, maybe we'll know more after we talk with them.
You're talking about some of them erecting canopies or such, would any of those require the fabric structure permit? Have you looked into that part of it?
I have not.
And also, you're talking about the music, the acoustic guitar, bagpipe, would the entertainment event permit be required? If they are, they're supposed to be attached to this application that we're considering now. And they're not, so, but I mean, I see the events, but not backup permits.
It would require a P A system, that was one question I filled out, an application to the event, and one of them, I was asked if, we're talking about a P A system or sound system, no. You know, this was a school age child that wanted to come and play their flute, you know, that's what we're talking about, we're not talking about a band and...
So there's no amplified music of any type?
No, no.
There is a minimal fee of $10 per day for electric hookup also.
None of these would require it.
Do you have anything yet? No, no signs, no amplified music, no, no open alcohol or consumption. Yeah. Okay, now your motion, sir.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion then that we allow it for four weeks, at $250 total, for the whole time, and after four weeks, or even before then, you know, whenever you see, if, say, well, this, it looks like it's gonna take off, or, you know, this is not getting traction, come back and we'll look at it further at that point. That's my, that's my motion, and I don't...
What date are we gonna use for the starting date of that?
What would be the starting?
The 28th, I think is the Friday.
27th is what you had in your application.
Okay, so we need that starting date, and then the month that...
Yeah, March 27th being the first date, and...
The following three weeks.
And then also reapply to, for, get on the agenda for the council for discussion.
Andy, is that good enough for you?
In addition to the standard rate, there is a security deposit. Would we require that for the four weeks? It's a refundable deposit.
Yeah, I would think we could waive that with the Chamber blessing on this, is that, you know, this is...
We know we're fine.
Yeah, yeah, there's a motivation to make this thing work, so I think the motivation's there without the threat of a deposit loss.
Well, the Chamber believes in this, and, you know, if we have to come out some money initially, because it's the startup cost, that's our biggest, once we get it rolling.
Motion made by John, do I ever hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Bob, any further discussion?
Yeah, we're talking $250 total, a full-day rental normally is $250, and they're talking, using it four times.
But not four times.
Four times, or four different days for three hours a day, so yeah, I think the $250 for the total is a good compromise in this situation.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
That's only for the farmers.
I'm sorry, all opposed?
Well, I don't oppose the concept, but I have a problem with going back on our previous decision about fee waivers.
Okay, the motion passes three to one. Thank you.
Like I said, please get on the agenda for next, the next month after you start.
I'm just standing there for the sale.
Yeah, she's, she's not going anywhere.
Okay.
Okay, the second one is the approval request from Laura, on behalf of the Chamber, to suspend peddling ordinance on the sale of the trail, allow use of the basketball courts for the event, and waive the rental fee for use of the meadows. The concept of the farmer's market, I understood, is how would this, this is a one-time event?
This is the sale of the trail, the Saturday that runs from 8 to 12. Apparently, the Chamber has had some rental spots in front of the arcade zone in the past, I don't know. But this year, we were asking to be able to use the same way, about 10 people that sold in the grassy area, but in, in our communications with the town, I was told y'all would prefer that we use the basketball court as well as the meadows. We've got about 12 people right now who wanna be able to trail our items over Saturday morning and sell it, and then pack up, it's not sold in late.
Is this, does anybody remember what we did last year for the sale on the trail?
If I recall...
Pat remembered.
Okay, Pat?
The Chamber sold lots, a section for $10, or you could have two sections, they were, I don't remember the size of them, but the Chamber charged you $10 or $20, and let people come in and...
I mean, does anybody remember what the, remember what the town did last year, because I guess this request comes up?
What I understand, Gwen Hardy handled it for the Chamber, and it was approved?
Yeah.
But it was not in the meadows.
No, ma'am, but this year, when I was talking to Chris and Linda via email, they, when I suggested we use the green grass area over by the Lakelore Inn, which they did last year, they suggested, they didn't wanna do that this year, so they suggested the old basketball court in the meadows, that's the only reason why I'm asking for that.
I went to see Linda today to, to get from her how she, she felt, because this whole thing about the no waivers was something that was done to simplify the whole process of renting town property, and she was not in today, so I was not able to clarify. But if you talked with her, were you aware, I don't know if you were aware, but it's in our packet of the fee schedule for the meadows.
I'm not, I'm not aware of it. Like I said, this was just something that the Chamber did for, they'd asked me to handle it this year.
Well, I know in the past, the Chamber, for several years, asked for waivers, until we changed the fees, reduced the fees, and no longer considered waivers. And they, as I recall, stopped asking for, for waivers, but I was not able to confirm that with Linda.
Oh, if I may, how are you coordinating with the vendors that wanna use that area? Are they paying for space?
Yes, sir.
How much is that?
They pay $10 a space.
$10 a space?
We've had people calling and emailing the Chamber, saying they wanted to continue doing what they've done in the years past. doing what they've done in the years past.
Well, then, I don't see any reason for us to waive that fee. Uh, and, but like before, they would qualify for the charitable event, which is only a hundred dollars for the day instead of the two fifty. And, and, and then there's a two fifty security deposit, which is refundable.
Any other comments?
Would it be different if we were to be able to use, not the meadows, and use the property over in front of Arcade Building like they did in the past?
Well, we don't have a fee schedule for that area over there.
That's a preference. That's...
Yeah, we don't.
I'm afraid there's gonna be confusion this year, because, um, I've talked to people, and they said, well, we're just gonna set up where we did last year.
Yeah.
Like I said, it was Linda and Chris and my emails, uh, that suggested, you know, the town that want y'all over there, they want y'all at the old basketball court.
I, I wasn't aware that the town didn't want anybody over there.
Not from us.
I, I would think you could do what you did last year.
So is that what we need to do? I can call the vendors back out, and we don't smoke at the people, and just tell them...
I'm fine with that. You fine?
I'm fine with, we're good with that, man.
Sure.
We're good with that. And also, there's electricity outlets over there and everything set up for that.
I don't think they need it, this is just for that yard sale, so I'll just contact them and tell them, uh, that green space that's in front of the chamber building, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Sound good. No, no issue.
No issue.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Laura.
They charge ten dollars a space.
Thanks for your...
So you're officially withdrawing this request?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item number seven. You wanna take a quick ten-minute break?
Oh, yes.
Let's take a quick ten-minute break. We'll be back at twenty-five after.